Okay, it's 6:05. I'm going to call to order the budget hearing for Thursday, September 19th, 2019. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Fleck?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. With that, we will open the budget hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Altmeyer.
Thank you very much. So in front of you, after nine months of processing the FY20 budget, you have a nice bound budget in front of you for your perusing if you'd like. You know, I'd like to present this budget, but I'd like to start kind of with a budget conversation, really outlining how and why we're, you know, as a district, how it relates to the budget. Everything we do, right? The budget is a reflection of the strategic plan of our mission, our vision, our goals, and everything that we're doing today is in the budget and how we're allocating those resources is a result of the budget. From a district standpoint, you know, I like to think that we're doing pretty good. In fact, I like to think we're doing pretty great, actually, from a district perspective. We're always trying to improve, and this budget, the FY20 budget, has a lot of additional resources allocated towards students. From an educational standpoint, this budget reflects our focus on curriculum and all that we're doing, right? And we're doing some great things. I mean, we have some great programming, programming that other school districts can't offer and aren't offering today. We have programs that other districts wish they had, which is evidenced by all the districts coming out to our innovation days, trying to learn and duplicate the things that we're doing here at District 158. So our budget really reflects a commitment to all these things, from special education to personalized learning, to social emotional learning, to English language learners, to dual language, and so, so much more. It's all in this budget as we move forward. So the budget also reflects some great things we're doing in operations and maintenance, right? We spend about $12 million a year in operations and maintenance, and it reflects a continued commitment to maintain our buildings, facilities, as well as our grounds. The budget reflects what we're doing with energy and energy efficiency. I think we all know we're one of the best in the state, and next year we're probably going to be the best in the state, and this budget continues to push us forward down that path of energy efficiency so that we can keep those dollars into the classroom. And yes, this budget reflects our move towards solar next year with a decrease in the energy budget. The budget also reflects, from a technology standpoint, everything we're providing our students, our employees, our community in general. You know, I like to think, too, Dr. Budzinski has done a fantastic job. We're probably one of the best tech departments in the state with everything that we provide. We're one of the largest districts with one-to-one, and everything that we provide is represented in the FY20 budget. We continue to upgrade our infrastructure. We have a replacement schedule for our Chromebooks and our laptops with high efficiency in everything that we do in technology. We even have a process for harvesting parts from our Chromebooks, furthering our efficiency within the technology department, so those costs could actually be put into the classroom. Again, it's all part of the FY20 budget. So what we are doing is really what we need to do for students, and it's all part of the FY20 budget. So with that, I'm going to get into the budget a little bit, right? So we've already presented several drafts of the budget, with the last draft being the draft we presented in July, the tentative draft. And there's been only a few changes to that, so I'm going to keep this at a high level and just kind of get through the big picture, the numbers, the assumptions, the modifications from that tentative draft, some larger budget variances, and ultimately, the recommendation to approve the budget. From a really big picture, operating revenues are budgeted at $109.8 million. Operating expenditures are budgeted at $109.7 million, resulting in an operating surplus of $155,000.914. This is a very tight budget. It's probably the tightest budget that we've had in a long time, which is evidenced by when I get through the assumptions and some of the modifications you'll see. From the assumption standpoint, from a revenue standpoint, we're pretty much locked and loaded. CPI, the majority of our revenues, property taxes, is locked in at 2.1% for levy year 18, that's last year, and CPI at 1.9% for levy year 19, so that's a very solid number. New construction is set for levy year 2018 with estimated new construction at $15 million for levy year 19. That might be a little bit of a stretch, but we are hoping that the work that we're doing, especially working with some of the new properties that were constructed a few years ago, that some of that new construction does come through, and we're continuing to work on that. Actually, as we speak today, we had a meeting on that. State funding reflects the new evidence-based funding model, the annual hold harmless portion of that, combined with the increase for additional Tier 2 funding, approximating $675,000. Interest income has been increased to approximately $500,000 to reflect more favorable interest rates over prior year, although they've slipped back the last week or so. We still think we'll be, we still think we'll be okay with that interest income number. On the expenditure side, with salaries and benefits approximating 75% of our overall expenditures, we feel like we're, we're pretty solid there. Salaries reflect the district's current collective bargaining agreements. Health insurance reflects a 5% increase. After the last several years, we do feel, based on our large claims in the pipeline, we have, we have been hit pretty hard in health insurance the last few years, that we're hoping we have a good, healthy year moving forward, but that line item is increasing at 5%. Last year, the reserve for replacement, all right, and this is kind of the, the line item that tells you that this is a very tight budget. Last year, the reserve for replacement was budgeted $500,000, and we were able to meet that goal, to have $500,000 that we can restrict, reserve and restrict moving forward with a resolution. However, this year, there is no reserve for replacement, right? So unfortunately, we didn't have extra dollars in the budget to set aside for future reserves. That being said, administration will make a recommendation to the Board of Education via resolution if, at year end of fiscal year 20, a budgeting operating surplus exists. Modifications, the modifications to the FY20 tentative draft that the board saw in July, here's a big one. It's the very first one. It's $2 million. It's $2 million of revenue and $2 million of expense. And maybe Mr. Quagliano is familiar with this, but in accordance with GASB-84, all extracurricular revenues and expenses have been added to the budget. So our extracurricular clubs, the clubs that you see some of the information on the fiscal updates, the activity funds, those revenues and expenses now need to be recorded, recognized on the books. Last year, based upon FY19's revenues and expenditures, we were right around $2 million in total revenues coming into the district with expenses going out. So we opted to budget $2 million. $2 million is sitting as other local revenue in that line item, and it's also sitting as interscholastic programs expense. So it's kind of a wash on the overall budget.
It's an in and out. So I was not familiar. I did read this ahead of time.
Yeah.
Noticed that. So my question is, did they, any requirement to restate prior periods?
There was not.
So you're stuck with this, what looks like is increase in operating expenses. You know, people won't translate the fact that...
Yeah. Well, you know, I don't want to, this is very similar to the on-behalf revenue and expense.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And the on-behalf revenue expense, if you've looked at those numbers, when you, you see the audit report, year after year have grown tenfold from what they were in 2009. They're almost unbelievable, actually. But at least these numbers, we know what these numbers are. They are representing incoming revenues through the district from a fiduciary responsibility, the Board of Education. We, as administration, do have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we are collecting and managing those funds appropriately, which is, I think, why they're doing this.
Which is what we've done anyway.
Which is what we've done anyway.
But my, my question is, and I'm not familiar with the language of the act, but does it, does it ensure that those funds get used for that purpose, or is there, is there anything that...
Well, yeah, this is just an accounting, generally accepted, you know, from the standards board, how we have to report these revenues in our annual, from a budgeting standpoint, as well as from an audit standpoint.
All right.
Yeah. But we, of course, still have that fiduciary responsibility.
So when we go to calculate now annually our operating expense per pupil, is this going to be in that number? It's going to raise it a couple hundred bucks.
You're great. I, to be honest, we, we haven't, we haven't gone through that yet, so that is a great question.
Yeah. I don't know.
But it would, it would raise that number for everybody.
Yeah.
Across the state, that is actually reporting appropriately.
Just somebody looking at your historical, and they're looking over a five-year span, they're going to see, all of a sudden, this year, you know, it was going to grow anyways, and now it grows an extra couple hundred bucks per student beyond that because this is added in. But, okay, I mean, it's...
I will get back to the board on that. That is a really good question.
Districts that don't have such a healthy activity fund, it's not going to impact them as much, and then it's going to be comparing apples and oranges to prior years, and people aren't going to understand where that came from.
Correct. If you're a high school district, it's more. If you're a unit district, it's a little less. If you're elementary, it's nothing. Yeah. Other modifications to the FY20 tentative budget were all other grants, including the final state funding was trued up. We finalized the transportation claim. The idea grant with a rollover was trued up, and expenses were, were matched with revenue. Other federal funding and title grants were finalized, the title grants, and then, of course, we have departmental allocations allowing the various departments, as well as the buildings, to move expenses around as they see fit to, to better manage their overall budget. Those are the modifications. As you can see, it's, it's not that much, other than that $2 million gross-up. The budget variances from prior year, big picture, the FY20 operating revenues as a result, the budget increase is approximately $4.7 million, primarily driven by, well, that $2 million GASB-84 adjustment, as well as the increase of levy dollars, $2 million CPI in new construction, and an increase in the EBF revenues of approximately $675,000. Pretty straightforward. Operating expenditures are budgeted to increase $4.8 million versus the FY19 budget, again, driven by the $2 million GASB-84 increase to the interscholastic program expense line item, as well as the increase in salaries and benefits of $3 million, increase in purchase services of $230,000, primarily school resource officers, and a $500,000 reduction in capital outlay, which is the reserve for replacement. So what that tells you is our capital spending, we're keeping that flat with prior year. So the budget moving forward for operations and maintenance, which is where the majority of capital projects occur, that budget line item is flat with FY19, which is good news because we'll get a lot done. As a result of the FY20 tentative budget, as a result of all of those changes, our current operating surplus is $156,000 approximately, and at this time, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the FY20 proposed budget at the special meeting immediately following this meeting. But I'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I have no que, I did go through it. That was, gave the change in accounting. It's the only thing I was going to touch base with, which you handled.
Yeah, and that really came through as a result of the audit. So that came through, really, in the last several weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's fine. So, no, as usual, extremely thankful for how well this is put together. You know, I think it's, it is, does give you an idea how it's starting to squeeze down a bit. I mean, we, we kind of knew that would probably start happening with the, you know, employment contract that we have, that we were pushing it up against, you know, what it was going to get us to. So it's, it's not completely surprising that it's getting that tight, but it's, it's, it's getting tight. So... I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I really appreciate your opening, your remarks with, with the whole point of what drives this is, is the fact that we focus on the strategic plan. The, that drives everything we do, drives the budget, of course, and I think this budget very much reflects what that plan is and how it best serves the schools and the districts. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Altmeyer. Then I think we need to ask if there are any public comments. So, Mr. Armstrong?
Any.
Okay.
No, Mr. President?
Okay. All right. Well, then, with that, it is 6:21. I will make a motion to adjourn the budget hearing. Second from Mr. Garin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We are adjourned. We'll be taking a four-minute break, so we don't open the actual special meeting until 6:25. Okay, it is 6:25. I'm going to call to order the special meeting with closed session. Special meeting with closed session? Is there a closed session? Without closed session, for Thursday, September 19th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Gentry? Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Okay, we have a, we, okay, we do have a quorum, though. There's Mr. Gentry enters at 6:25. Okay, the, is there any public comment for this meeting, Mr. Armstrong? Still no.
No, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Altmeyer for the fiscal year 20 budget. That's it?
Nothing else to add.
Okay, nothing else to add. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year 20 budget as presented at the hearing.
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Okay, that motion carries. We'll take Mr. Garin's here as a yes.
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0 with two absents.
All right, we're out of closed session. Let's resume in public session. There is no action to take from closed session, so let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Malendi?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we can continue. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bealan to introduce our guests for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everybody. I have with us tonight some team members from our incubator program, which was a new program that we started this year. And I'm going to actually invite Jack Towne up along with our students to lead us in the pledge and then we'll get into some of the nuts and bolts after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see here, guys.
Sure, yeah, go.
I'm Sam Spencer. I'm a senior at Humming High School.
I'm Brandon Arie. I am also a senior at Humming High School.
My name is Brady Isino. I am a senior as well.
Kyle Labruzo, senior as well.
Elizabeth Kim, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Lily Williams, just like the rest. I'm also a senior.
All right, we're out of closed session. Let's resume in public session. There is no action to take from closed session, so let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we can continue. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bealan to introduce our guests for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everybody. I have with us tonight some team members from our incubator program, which was a new program that we started this year. And I'm going to actually invite Jack Towne up, along with our students, to lead us in the pledge, and then we'll get into some of the nuts and bolts after.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see here, guys.
I'm Sam Spencer. I'm a senior at Hungry High School.
I'm Brandon Arie. I am also a senior at Hungry High School.
My name is Brady Isino. I am a senior as well.
Kyle Labruzzo, senior as well.
Elizabeth Kim, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Lily Williams, and just like the rest, I'm also a senior.
Yeah, absolutely. So, thanks for having us here. My name's Jack Towne. I'll tell you a little bit about our incubator program. These are two of our teams representing the program today. And if you've ever seen the TV show Shark Tank, that's basically what we do. It is Shark Tank the class, and it's an absolute blast. So, we have Team Gymnet over here. They'll tell you, maybe with their elevator pitch, a little bit about their, the app that they'd like to develop. And then we have Team Inspiration Box over here, and they've kind of melded a couple of different ideas. So, the students kind of went home for the first week or so and took note of problems that they had or perceived. And then they've kind of developed these problems and built them, built solutions around these problems, and that's kind of the start of the class. And they'll tell you a little bit about their solutions, but we're, you know, we're also looking for mentors and people to help teach these students things. So, actually, just today, we had someone from Northwestern Medical in their marketing department come in and talk to them about market sizing and things like that. So, it's, it's an awesome class where it's, it's not just me telling them what I know, but we're inviting community members and people that do these things for a living to talk to them. And actually, on Monday, we'll have, Monday and Tuesday, we'll have, I think, seven or eight different entrepreneurs come in and talk to them, give them some feedback on their ideas. And then those people will then, some of them will hopefully mentor them along the way as they build their own businesses. So, I'd love for them to, for you guys to ask them some questions. So, go for it, guys.
Well, I want to hear your elevator speech. So, why don't we start with this team over here? Why don't you tell me a little bit about what you guys are doing, and then you guys can go, and I'll ask some questions.
I can go ahead and start. Well, we started, originally, we started with the problem of a gym membership, or a typical gym membership being too expensive. Say you go to St. Tegra, sixty dollars a month, and you're locked into a twelve-year, or a twelve-month contract. People would buy that, buy that, buy into that contract. They'd spend sixty dollars, and that averages to about two dollars a day, no matter whether you go or not. So, people would go, they'd go five times a month. They'd lose the majority of their money because they're not taking advantage of the membership. So, our original idea was to, to allow for the consumer to, to sign up for our, our software, our, our app. We were going to create an app. It's called Gymnet. You pay a small membership fee of five dollars a month. You then go on to, we, we have a network around, around the country, so we're kind of marketing towards a traveling, a traveling business person, where they go to the hotel gym. It is subpar. They don't want to work out in a hotel gym, but they want to stay fit while they're on, while they're on a business trip. So, they go, they, they sign up with Gymnet. They pay the five-dollar-a-month fee. They can go to which any multitude of gyms around the country. They go to the Lifetime of the Street. They pay that daily fee. Let's say it's Lifetime is a hundred dollars a month, so that would be four dollars. You take that, you take that, you pay that fee. You scan at our, you would sell to the gyms a software, a little scanning station. Put the app they scan there, QR code, walk into the gym. No, no sign up, no interaction with, with the cashier. Workout, complete your workout, scan out, and it just automatically charges your card. So, it's very consumer-friendly, very, very fast, very easy. It allows, the gyms have, obviously, you might think, why would a gym want this because it loses money? They would take royalty from that scan, so they take, we'd have to do math on calculations, but say fifty percent of that scan, and they would take that as profit. They, they'd, they'd get more foot traffic. They'd get that royalty. They also, they entertain their membership to more customers. Essentially, that was our, that was our idea. I'll let Brandon explain a little more.
So, you know, just to kind of summarize everything he just said, in a bit of an elevator pitch, if you will. You know, someone like me who has a gym membership, you know, obviously, good-looking, healthy crowd out here tonight, but, you know, a lot of us, we don't like, we don't always go to the gym as much as we are. We don't go to the gym as often as we want to. Even I don't go. I have a membership at Lifetime, and even I don't go as much as I'd like to. So, with our system, you know, and selling our network to local gyms across the country, for people, like he said, business people who travel all the time and just, you know, don't want to, you know, burn a hole in their pocket with a membership that they don't exactly use all the time, I think it's a worthwhile investment, and it's worthwhile for the customer, you know, to save a little bit of money while still benefiting themselves and benefiting their health.
We also talked about marketing to moms. You know, they might go to the gym, and they, there's a variety of things to do, but they're not going to be the ones using the bench press and the squat rack. They're going to be the ones doing the treadmill and the bike. It allows for them to, to pay that small fee once just to do that, so they're not paying sixty dollars just to use the treadmill.
Excellent.
There's not really much I could sum up. They kind of said everything. But, like, if you guys are confused at all, it's kind of like Uber, but for gyms. So, it's the best way to describe it, and, yeah.
Any questions?
I agree.
I'll get to the questions. I want to hear their pitch, and then I'll answer.
All right, so we're Inspiration Box. So, many people here have had trouble deciding on gifts for family members, wives, their kids. And our service is to provide you options for those gifts and provide a monthly subscription box or even a personalized gift service, so you're able to quickly decide on options for your family members, for your lovely wives, for the husbands that can't decide on a gift because they don't know what their wives want. So, just a short little quiz you'll take. You can either send it to somebody, or if you're really close to the person, you know a lot about them, you can take the quiz for them, and then you can customize the box. You get options that you can choose for, and you can put it into that box. It's going to be about five items per box, and it depends on, like, what you want to put in there, of course, and what your price range is. And then we will also be giving back to the community in the sense of, we'll take a small profit from each box and send it over to a charity that is voted upon by the community on our websites each month, and we'll send it to people because we want to give back to the community.
So, I created this idea last school year in my entrepreneurship class. And with this product, I really want it to be a really huge, like, personalization type of service because in this world, I don't see a lot of things that have a lot of meaning to things anymore. So, I really want that to have, that created, to really have people to have more meaningful things for their loved ones.
Okay, let me start with you guys. What is the biggest hurdle that you've come across so far in developing your product?
I'd have to say, like, when we talk to, like, the entrepreneurs and business workers that want to help us, they always ask us how are we going to make our profit? And that's kind of where we're at right now. We're still trying to figure out how we can make money at, like, a good rate, like, kind of like Uber did. So, that's kind of our problem right now. That's pretty much it. So, you know, like he said, you know, for us to charge such a small fee for, you know, everyday gym-goers, obviously, it's going to be hard to turn a profit from a business standpoint, and there's a lot of numbers to be crunched as to, you know, how much, you know, how much would we have to charge that wouldn't be, you know, more than the competitors that are already charging people so much? You know, enough to make a profit, but pretty much just the business standpoint of how we make our money back. Like he said, we met with plenty of local business leaders, which I thought personally was a great opportunity, and they gave us plenty of, you know, thoughtful and insightful tips and tricks. But they kind of advised us to, you know, focus more on smaller gyms and to focus more on a network kind of a system where, instead of, you know, having our own gym system, like a Lifetime, all across the country, we could actually sell our system to places like Fitness 19 or other local gyms all across the country to give that, you know, this new kind of access all across the country without, you know, the, without the, the price and the expenses that come with an actual membership. But when it comes to, you know, our issues, really, it's just pretty much that, is how we turn a profit at the end of the day.
Sure, okay. How about you guys? Have you come up with some hurdles that you didn't anticipate, and how are you getting over them?
So, the biggest one that we started with was how to set our business apart from other customizable boxes and other monthly subscription boxes, and we did that by, of course, creating where we give back to the community. And then our new big hurdle is actually trying to find which brands we want to partner up with and how we go about doing that, as we're not quite as knowledgeable in that case. So, that's our current biggest hurdle right now.
Sounds like all of you have a pretty good handle on the, the software development side of it. Is that, is that sort of what helped drive your ideas? Or did you have the idea, and then you decided to use your tech savvy to develop it?
I'd say we kind of had the idea first. And I know we all have an interest in fitness and going to the gym, so that kind of drove our original idea. And we kind of grew that into the app. We haven't yet created an app. We only, we, Mr. Towne's going to let us do that later in the year, but...
Okay, very good.
So, Elizabeth was the one who created the product, and I know a little bit more about the more technical side and math side of that, so that's where I come into play, and she's more about the creative side of it. So, it kind of helped with us partnering, partnering up a little bit here.
And also, like, we had to create a whole business plan. So, what I first did was, I really wanted to do something really meaningful to me, and I first had, like, the name Inspiration, because I want people to be inspired every day. So, from that name, I just started to make it something bigger and into, like, things for, like, mental health. It can go through, like, multiple schools to, like, inspire other school districts and kids like that. So, helping one another, like, like, buy each box at a time, some slogan like that. So, yeah.
We could, we could spend all night asking you guys questions. And I got to tell you, I'm very impressed, because this is the sort of thing, back when I was around your age, that would be done in an MBA class, not in high school. So, I'm quite impressed with what you guys are doing, and I wish you all the success and all, all the best as you go forward with this, in pioneering this program. So, we're going to take some pictures with you guys, so stay there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't turn red.
I'm going to see you too.
Yeah, good luck.
I know, it's, it's been a while.
You guys are as tall as I am, standing out a little. Nah, it's okay. It happens all the time. See, usually, usually for, for the pledge, a lot of the little kids are here, and all their parents are taking a bazillion pictures, so... All right.
Well done, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, everybody. Good luck. Can't even walk. Can't even walk. You want to get a butt? Okay. Continuing on, and for the last time, well, maybe not the last time, but Mr. Armstrong, do we have any public comment?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Under revision and adoption of the agenda. Ms. Lombard, do you have a report? I better put down yes as I write down these numbers. Dr. Slichter? Mr. Zare?
Yes, I do.
Dr. Budzinski?
I do have a report, yes.
Oh, my gosh. I am in a bizarre world. Uh, Mr. Almeyer? No, okay.
I want to have a report.
Dr. Del Castile? Okay, looks like we do have something under Community Relations. Dr. Rowe? Okay, I may have something under Teams. All right. Okay, then I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the removal of Items 11 and 12. Their second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Garen. Uh, yeah, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, moving on. Turn it over to Ms. Lombard.
Okay, so this is a brief report for our Regional Office of Education Compliance Review that took place last year. It's the review that happens every five years. They've now moved that down to every four years. However, we just recently got back our report on that. What the Compliance Review looks at, the five different areas of our students, our staff, policy and governance, health and life, safety, and then our instructional practices. And underneath all of those is just under 200 different probes that they look at, making sure that we're in compliance with all of the different school code policies and all of those things. So, it was an undertaking by many people in the district. They also, the Regional Office does come out and goes through any new employees or employees who have changed, changed positions, to make sure we're all in compliance with that. So, Mr. Zare, there was about 600 human resource employee files that were also gone through before they, they came. And we are fully recognized. We just got that report back. After all that work, we got a summary that said, keep up the great work. But, so, we're doing really, really good things in the district. And the nice thing about this, it used to be all paper pencil kind of hand collecting all that. It is now online, so the things that we are doing, we can actually put in. That's all carries over from year to year. So, even though we don't have another review now for another four years, as we do policy changes or we have curriculum and instruction changes, we can go ahead and upload those things, so it'll be much smoother the next time through. But great work by everybody on the team, so...
Any questions or comments on that? All right. Dr. Slichter?
This is just a little preview to kind of keep the board aware of where we are in our exciting school improvement essa time of the year. As you recall, last year, we are looking at when we get our data into the state. We just approved the school report card data. They're now crunching their numbers. And then I'm going to keep qualifying and say we are told that we will have our preliminary designations. If you recall, they had the performance designations last year for each school. We're told we'll have those just to us by October 1st. They'll be public by the end of October, and that's when the school report card is released publicly. So, what we do anticipate is being able to then do a kind of a larger presentation, telling our data picture. There's some new complexities as the state was building out how they're putting those designations together. They kind of had a long-term plan since they weren't quite ready to go with all the metrics last year. So, we'll just remind everybody at that point what went into these, and then talk a little bit about our, our own story, the way that we think is important based on our strategic plan and what some of our data is telling us. So, that is on tap for November after our school report card becomes public. But we'll keep the board informed every step of the way, and we're waiting for October 1st to see if we get some information from the state at that point.
All right. Any questions, comments on that? Thank you very much. Turn it over to Mr. Zare.
Good evening. At your place, and you should have a couple of reports that were in your folder. This annual staff salary and benefits report for all the teachers and administrators. So, a few pages there, and then a one page on the IMRF compensation report. So, I'll take any questions anyone may have on those reports. We will be posting them. This is for information only. We'll be posting them to the website this evening or tomorrow. October 1st is our deadline for that. It's just transparency with what the public employees are making.
That's done annually?
Yep.
Any comments on that? All right, thank you very much. And Dr. Budzinski?
Thank you very much. Brief update this evening, actually, on some of our...
I do not.
Okay, there they are. Any questions on that by the board? Alright. Uh, and then I will then turn it over to Dr. Rowe.
Alright, I have, uh, two, two things, two items to update you on this evening. As you know, we're engaged in our, uh, strategic planning process. Um, and after, you know, a few months of planning with the facilitation team, uh, we are nearing our first community engagement session on Tuesday, September 24th, at 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the high school. Um, I wanted to update and publicly show some appreciation for the facilitation, uh, facilitation planning team, uh, who's being chaired by Rashawn Walker, Sean McCusker, and then newly added Rita Patel, one of the members to, um, to chair that, is, uh, some of our co-chairs. Travel schedules are, are gonna be complicated, but we're asking these people to give us two nights a month for basically the entire school year, uh, to lead us through this process. It's, it's been, it's been wonderful so far. Uh, we have 150, our SVPs from the community, um, ahead of Tuesday night's presentation. Um, you know, I, I would again invite and welcome the board to, to attend. All of our district and principals will be, district admin and principals will be in attendance. There's no role for you to be there other than interact with people and say hello and listen and participate. Um, but we'd love to have you there. Uh, but again, that'll be Tuesday night, the 24th, at the high school, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Childcare is provided, so we are NHS. Thank you to NHS for, um, for babysitting. Uh, my second topic is, is another very exciting topic, which is our, our solar groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, on October the 1st, at 1 o'clock, in the Conley McCavan bus parking lot, uh, we will hold a ceremonial, uh, groundbreaking ceremony, um, to signify the, the start of the actual construction process on our, for our, our solar array. And as you know, uh, at the completion of this project, 80% of our energy will be produced from our solar panels. And we will be the largest school district with a solar array system of this nature in the state of Illinois. Um, as such, our, our SVPs for the event, uh, include Congressman, or Congresswoman Underwood, Senator DeWitt, Representative Skilicorn, um, as well as all three village managers and mayors or presidents from the neighboring communities that, that we're involved in. So having, having all three representatives from Aldonquin, Lake of the Hills, and Huntly is, is really, really important to us. Um, but again, you're invited to that event as well. Hopefully, uh, you'll be able to attend. It'll be, maybe an hour. It won't be very long, but, uh, a nice, a nice celebration. It's been a lot of fanfare with the, uh, the public dignitaries who are able to join. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No questions? Thank you very much. That's, uh, excellent news on all fronts there. Okay, uh, moving on to legislation. I'm gonna, uh, highlight a few things here. The governor did sign a number of bills pertaining to, um, education in some fashion. I wanted to highlight a few of them. Um, House Bill 1561, uh, requires school boards to develop threat assessment protocols and create threat assessment teams. Um, we're kind of on top of that, and now that's, uh, effective, uh, last August 26th. Um, 2124, House Bill 2124 was signed into law, um, which just makes some changes to some closed session about holding closed meetings to consider appointment employment, uh, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of certain specific employees, including independent contractors, volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel. Um, and that's already in effect now. Um, and finally, another one that caught my eye is, uh, House Bill 2627. And it has to do with, uh, student discipline and, um, efforts to, uh, if you're gonna detain and question a student on school grounds under the age of 18, suspected of committing a criminal act, uh, reasonable efforts have to be made to try and ensure that the student's parents or guardian is present during the questioning. And there was a bunch of others. I think we're gonna be heading into the veto session next, and, uh, I heard that, uh, Mr. Almeyer's, uh, Patel bill is, uh, getting some, uh, some traction. So I really hope that that goes forward. Okay, Dr. Rowe?
I do, I have a few to add. Uh, you did, you stole one of mine, so I'm glad you.
I'm sorry.
One fewer that I have to cover. Um, a few of the things that, that we're highlighting and, and focusing on diving deeper into, I don't have all the answers for them yet, but I wanted to publicly bring them to your attention. We continue to work through the details, uh, with our legal team, um, to, to ensure that we're prepared to respond. But Senate Bill 456, um, is a new one that any employee charged with sexual harassment or assault will have their license immediately revoked by the state superintendent. Um, that's an interesting one. It, it is a, uh, therefore, if you have no license, you cannot teach. Um, fortunately, that's not something we've had to deal with, but we're getting our ducks in a row so that way we would, our process would be, uh, prepared should we ever be faced with that situation. Um, also in.
What happens when you pass the bridge? If the, the state superintendent pulls your license, we have to abide by that and at least remove you from the class.
So whether it would be a termination or, um, other act, other, uh, unpaid leave or something like that, but not terminated until the end of the, uh, of the court case. We'd have some options there, but that's what we're, we're working out to make sure that we're applying in place. Um, also in that same, in that same bill, uh, school boards must review sexual abuse policies every two years. The press will do that for us, but I wanted to bring that, bring that forward. And then finally, all, all employees must be fingerprinted every five years and run through the sexual, um, sexual abuser database as well as the murder database. Um, I bring this up because this is a, a perfect example of an unfunded mandate that will negatively impact our finances extremely. So we need $20,000 to fingerprint all of our tenured staff. So, uh, that's about, that's maybe the largest unfunded mandate that I have come across yet. Um, but there, there's, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of pushback against that one, but it, we have some, some items still to work out, but it, currently, that would be a, a heavy, high-dollar item for us to manage. Now, the premise behind it is perfectly sound and wonderful. We don't, you know, we wanna be sure that our, we're putting the best people in front of our kids. It's just expensive. Um, so we'll of course abide and, and, and take care of our kids, but. Uh, House Bill 423 is the, the removal of basic skills requirement. Had some unintended consequences. Uh, they tried to make it easier for teachers to obtain their teaching certificate and therefore get into the classroom to assist in the educator or teacher shortage. But what they didn't account for was that a part of that act, um, our paraprofessionals rely on the paraprofessional exam and the ACT work keys for their certification. So the removal of the basic skills as a requirement is making it more difficult for paraprofessionals to get the proper certification to get into the classroom. Um, so, you know, we had, we actually, we felt this one. We had a couple of paraprofessionals in the process of the hiring, in the hiring process, and that interfered with our ability to hire them. So I hear that that will be addressed, uh, during veto session, but that'll, we have to wait and see. Uh, Senate Bill 1213 requires the paracommittee create an unsatisfactory appeal process. Uh, so if a teacher is issued a, a, given an unsatisfactory rating on their evaluation, um, overall evaluation of unsatisfactory, we have to institute an appeal process for them to have the ability to appeal that with an outside group. Outside group meaning another administrator, not the one who gave that, that rating. We met with our paracommittee yesterday, um, and actually, we'll get together a couple of more times this year, um, to ensure that, that once we have the, um, word back from our attorneys as to what that process should look like on our end, to make sure that the committee, uh, can approve that. And then finally, uh, House Bill 3586 is a special education law, uh, requiring that schools prepare all documents for IEP 72 hours prior to the meeting. I bring that up because our practice is just as last year. We implemented a 48-hour, uh, window, but it became law that 72 hours, um, be the window that all documents are prepared. Again, while positive intent, it put, it put a pretty strong strain on our teachers to be able to accommodate that. Um, there's another one that I'm hearing that during veto session, that may be addressed. But I wanted to bring it to your attention just as that was kind of a hot topic. Thank you. Slide.
Anything on legislative that's been, that's come out? I do, I will say this. I, I agree with your, sorry? Too much. I agree with your assessment on these unfunded mandates. They always have good intention. It's just, uh, it does put a strain on the districts and, and it may not seem like a lot overall for each one, but when you, the cumulative effect is, is very difficult.
Well, in my conversations with Mr. Zare on, on the fingerprinting, we're talking 400 to 500 employees that would be in that tenured window. And, and how, in our, our human resources office, we would most likely be coming with a request for an employee to do that. Um, 'cause it's not just running through the Raptor system, it could handle all the buildings. We're talking fingerprinting. It, it, it would be quite the involved process, all 10 of them. So we'll see what happens in the veto session.
Okay. Alright, uh, president's report. I have one thing that I wanna bring up, um, and it's just a huge thank you to, uh, the people that were involved in what I find, in what's fast becoming one of the best annual traditions of District 158, which is the Hutton Inn. Um, thanks to Mr. Almeyer and your whole team. I, I hope I'm not missing anybody that's, uh, here, but, uh, um, I had a blast, um, to see 2,500 runners, is that it? And another, another 500 at least on the square, having a, having a blast seeing Mr. Gentry fly by me halfway through. And, I mean, like I was standing still, because I practically was standing still. Yeah, and, uh, and seeing the, the neighbors, uh, um, they decorate and they're cheering people on. It's just, it's just one of the best, um, community, community events because it involves all ages, it involves families, and it's a great way to kick off the school year. And I'll let you share the numbers, but very simple money, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think a huge thank you goes out to the foundation. You know, Angela Casares was the race director and, and, uh, you know, she's got a, a bunch of team members, from Debbie Kent to Gwen Furman, uh, to some other district office employees that really, really helped, as well as several of the, uh, foundation members this year. So, um, it was just a great event, I think, all around. Um, the net, the net, uh, proceeds that were raised by the foundation, approximately $35,000, $36,000, um, which is a, a, you know, obviously, a great amount of money to support our students with, with scholarships and teacher grants. So, um, I know the foundation is looking forward to that this year and being able to use those dollars for that purpose, so. Uh, just, I think a great event all around. We're looking forward to next year.
Well, maybe most interesting is 1,300 of the 2,500 runners were students.
14.
14.
Yeah. We, we got a final, final count on that.
And they all blew by me also, so. I mean, the little ones, I couldn't believe it. I'm, I'm like, two miles in, and they're flying by like they're springtime. It was a blast. It was a blast. Isn't it, um, didn't you say it's like one of the largest 5Ks outside of the Chicago area or something?
Uh, we, the F Foundation brought this up, that, uh, there, the, let's see, there's Miami, the Chicago Hot Chocolate Run, and then there's a Miami 5K that have over 16,000 runners. But when you put it in perspective, that Huntly had 2,500 as compared to Chicago's 16,000, I mean, that, that's pretty, pretty amazing. We did some statistics in the F Foundation meeting yesterday and found out that, uh, a 5K in India actually had 86,000 runners. Um, we don't quite compare there, but for, Huntly's doing alright.
Yeah, we're doing alright. Definitely probably the largest 5K west of Chicago.
Well, please, keep it up, 'cause it's great. Okay, uh, moving on. We have the, uh, consent agenda. Um, is there anything that, um, needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. There being nothing, then, um, I am going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, as listed in item 17. Second. Second from Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Okay, motion carries. 19-2, insurance selection rate recommendations and wellness recommendations 2020. Mr. Zare, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, we'll walk through this, um, memo with everyone just real quick. Um, first of all, we'll start off with our recommendations for care, um, carriers from the insurance committee. Um, our medical plan has historically been on Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Uh, that recommendation is moving forward to stay with, um, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Uh, we are going to see an increase in premiums, uh, in the medical plan, uh, as outlined here, as you can see for our HMO and our PTOs, approximately, um, 8.49% for HMO and 7.89% of our PTO plans. Uh, we are making a recommendation, uh, to change our ancillary carriers, um, for the upcoming year. Uh, there was some good news here where, uh, when our broker went out for bid, uh, there were some very competitive bids. Uh, we are currently with Guardian, uh, for these carriers. Uh, but the recommendation coming from the team, uh, would be to move to Lincoln Financial for dental, basic life, and long-term, and voluntary life. As you can see there, and we have some, uh, decreases, um, that would be beneficial for the, uh, premium, uh, for the employees. And then also making a recommendation, uh, to move to BSP, uh, for our vision, uh, where we see a decrease also there. So, um, our insurance broker goes out for bid, um, tried to get Guardian, like, to get down to these prices. Um, and with the set years, uh, the committee felt these were the best, um, to make a switch to. In terms of an interruption to our employees, it should be very minimal. Uh, dental is usually where we see that interruption, but our top dentists that our employees are using, um, are covered. Three of the four top dentists are covered by Lincoln Financial. Uh, the other one, we will get on board, uh, once we get over to Lincoln Financial. Any questions about the carriers? Uh, the next page there, uh, shows the premiums. Have a comparison, um, from FY19 onto FY20 here, as we look at our increases. Uh, what you're seeing here, uh, is a number, um, followed in the collective bargaining agreement with HEA. Uh, you're seeing a monthly premium here. Uh, our employees, uh, when we send out rate sheets, they see it per check, so we just divide that, uh, number by two. So as you follow along there, you can see, uh, the increases, uh, that we are experiencing, uh, in the medical plans and then the decreases, um, overall, um, that we'll see in dental and vision moving forward. So, uh, the recommendation is to come forward also and to approve these new rates.
Very good. Questions, comments?
Rates. Got a few more items here.
Okay.
Okay, annual wellness screening. I'm very happy to continue with the annual wellness screening. We'll see a little bit of a shift this year. Uh, the past two years, we've been with interactive health, uh, Northwestern Medicine.
Move on to our action items, and let's start with the 19.1 supplemental purchase orders, supplemental accounts payable. Mr. Altmeier, is there anything that we need to know about this?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right. I'll make a motion to approve supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable, the amounts set forth in section 19.1 of the agenda. Second to Mr. Quagliano. Roll call, please.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Okay, motion carries. 19-2 insurance selection rate recommendations and wellness recommendations for 2020. Mr. Zear, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, we'll walk through this memo with everyone just real quick. First of all, we'll start off with our recommendations for carriers from the insurance committee. Our medical plan has historically been on Blue Cross Blue Shield. That recommendation is moving forward to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We are going to see an increase in premiums in the medical plan as outlined here, as you can see, for our HMO and our PPOs, approximately 8.49% for HMO and 7.89% for our PPO plans. We are making a recommendation to change our ancillary carriers for the upcoming year. There was some good news here where, when our broker went out for bid, there were some very competitive bids. We are currently with Guardian for these carriers, but the recommendation coming from the team would be to move to Lincoln Financial for dental, basic life, and long-term, and voluntary life. As you can see there, we have some decreases that would be beneficial for the premium for the employees, and then also making a recommendation to move to BSD for our vision, where we see a decrease also there. So, our insurance broker goes out for bid, tried to get Guardian to get down to these prices, and with the set years, the committee felt these were the best to make a switch to. In terms of interruption to our employees, it should be very minimal. Dental is usually where we see that interruption, but our top dentists that our employees are using are covered. Three of the four top dentists are covered by Lincoln Financial. The other one, we will get on board once we get over to Lincoln Financial. Any questions about the carriers? The next page there shows the premiums, have a comparison from FY '19 to FY '20 here as we look at our increases. What you're seeing here is a number followed in the collective bargaining agreement with HSA. You're seeing a monthly premium here. Our employees, when we send out rate sheets, they see it per check, so we just divide that number by two. So, as you follow along there, you can see the increases that we are experiencing in the medical plans and then the decreases overall that we'll see in dental and vision moving forward. So, the recommendation is to come forward also and to approve these new rates. Rates. Got a few more items here.
Okay.
Okay. Annual wellness screening. Very happy to continue with the annual wellness screening. We'll see a little bit of a shift this year. The past two years, we've been with Interactive Health. Northwestern Medicine has decided to go with a different carrier in terms of doing the wellness screenings, CHC Wellbeing. So, we have held meetings with them. This is gonna be a very smooth transition. So, we'd like to move forward with our annual wellness screenings. Those are scheduled currently for October. We have to get way out in front of that for that to happen. So, that's just an update there for the board. Historically, what we've done, we have offered an incentive, and you see that here, it's a $10 monthly credit towards insurance premiums. It started off, it was if you turned a physical in. Since we've added the wellness screening, we asked those employees, they have to be a part of the plan, obviously. The wellness screening is no cost to them. Also, if they complete the wellness screening and turn in their annual physical to the HR office by December 20th, they receive this credit once we get into January. So, a very positive thing as we encourage our employees to take ownership of their health and wellness moving forward. And working with Interactive Health was fantastic. We anticipate the same with CHC Wellbeing. We are with CHC because with Northwestern is with CHC. A lot of this, we not only do it onsite in the buildings, but there's off-site opportunities. And when Interactive Health was no longer partnering with Northwestern, unfortunately, our off-site places were not very close and convenient for employees. So, this will be a good situation to be in as we get ready to launch that. Any questions about wellness screenings? Some new benefit recommendations. So, not only are we progressive in the classroom, we like to be progressive everywhere. So, Mr. Altmeier, myself, and our brokers, we challenged our brokers to go and to look at something called the Zero Card. The Zero Card, what we're looking at there, it's actually not gonna be a card, it's gonna be an app when it's all said and done, but the Zero Card essentially, Mr. Altmeier describes this pretty well, but I think I'm gonna try to steal this one for you. He illustrates it very well. Let's say you would tweak your knee, okay? You go and you tweak your knee, and more than likely, your doctor has a relationship with someone to do an MRI. So, they connect you and they say, "Go here for your MRI." So, you go do the MRI, and it could be, you know, priced anywhere for $600, okay? So, you go do your MRI. The Zero Card steps in...
$3,000?
Right. $3,000 for the MRI. Okay. So, the Zero Card would step in. You would call a Zero Card company, and what they do is they go out and they try to find an imaging place that does this a little bit cheaper at the end of the day. $600 possibly. So, they try to find a local place. This is no cost to us, this is no cost to the employee, so they would recommend, "You go get this imaging done at wherever it may be." Could be a number of places. Zero Card has places that are out there on the map and more coming aboard. And so, this would be an opportunity to have less cost to the plan overall when it's all said and done. Our big sell is here, we have to promote this, and we have to get the employees to use it. So, with it being the first year, getting off the ground, there are some estimated savings. Of course, they give us estimated savings if there's 100% participation. We know that's not going to be the case, so we are anticipating employees will use this as they move forward, and we make this a benefit to help the overall wellness of the health insurance plan, if you will.
Yeah, and just add a little bit there. The benefit to the employee is by choosing a different imaging company that can do a $600 MRI versus a several thousand dollar MRI that you would typically, typically get, maybe a Centegra or a Northwestern, is there's no out-of-pocket to the employee at all. Zero. In other words, that's how the Zero Card works. So, the employee, the benefit to the employee is absolutely nothing out of pocket, and yet the school district or the organization that's using the Zero Card saves the difference between a $4,000 MRI and a $600 MRI. And those are generally the differences. For example, for those MRI imaging tests, I mean, the markup is absolutely huge at a Centegra or Northwestern versus some of these other imaging locations that are out there. So, Belvedere and a lot of other organizations, school districts are actually using the Zero Card. The savings that Belvedere saw last year come through the pipeline was about $150,000. Now, they've had it for several years, and they've really, really been pushing their employees to use it for their benefit, as obviously, as well as the benefit of the overall plan itself. So, a very, very positive thing for our employees and a very positive thing for the overall plan itself as well.
Who is Zero Card exactly? Is it a company or is it a brand or is it a...
I believe...
Zero Card is the company.
Is the company, yeah.
Yeah. It might come out of an incubator somewhere. Someone has figured something out there, that's for sure. So, our broker did a great job introducing this to the team and cost savings opportunity. We feel we should move forward with that. A couple other additions, the committee is recommending, or a couple voluntary plans here. So, these are costs to employees, so if you kind of think like taking on voluntary life insurance. So, this is a choice by the employee. We're looking at the voluntary accident and critical illness benefits. This essentially provides accident, the accident coverage is for off-the-job accidents that may occur. And so, as you go through those plans, it just makes the cost cheaper at the end of the day, and also, there's some incentives for using this. And we're recommending to go through Aflac for this. Aflac actually has some incentives as you get into the plan where they give you a gift card for using the services and getting certain screenings done. Also, the critical illness, I do have some rates there for the accident rates, and then we also have critical illness. Don't have those rates, those rates are based on age, but also to help the employee if they would incur a critical illness. So, once again, voluntary, this is something we're going to have to publish and push to get people to be a part of, but we think it would be great benefit to the employee. And like I said, there are some incentives there for wellness tests that would take place if they enroll in this insurance for them and their spouse. So, a nice add-on to the plan. And then just the final thing here, open enrollment. We are, we just had a meeting on it today. We're scheduled to go for open enrollment on November 4th. So, we'll do open enrollment for a couple of weeks. Hopefully, we go as planned, and so, recommendation to the board is the committee is seeking approval for all these items.
Just out of curiosity on the critical illness coverage, what was, I guess, a couple of questions, what kind of drove the thought process there to pursue that? Two would be what's the kind of expected take rate for that?
Yeah, so what drove that? They actually had, Alliant had their specialists come in and present that to the committee. What we're pushing Alliant to do is just bring new ideas to us, new opportunities to us, something that will benefit the employees at the end of the day. So, that's what was driving that. What was your other question, Kevin?
How many, what, how many takers do you expect?
Oh, we don't know. Well, we've gotta have 25 for the plan to go, so we're hoping 25, yeah, for the voluntary, but that's hard to really estimate, to be honest with you, what that's gonna look like.
Did you attach the payout or you didn't?
I did not.
No. So, let me jump in a little bit on the voluntary accident rates. Let me give you an example of things that would be covered. So, as a family, I think the voluntary accident rate is about $30 a month, $360 a year. If you are a family of four, for example, and everybody does their wellness, they go into their doctor and they all get their blood test done, for example, they will receive a check back. Did we get that check at $50 or...
Yeah, it's for the employee and the spouse, $50 each.
Yeah. So, immediately, the $360 for the spouse and the employee, there's $100 back, so you're down to $260. If for some reason, whether it's your child or whether it's yourself, you have to go to physical therapy for something, you know, my daughter is a runner. She's constantly, unfortunately, getting injured here and there, and she's seeing, she's going to physical therapy all the time. Those physical therapy sessions would be reimbursed at $35 per session under this plan, at 10 plans or at 10 visits per year. So, that's a $350 refund combined with the two wellness at $100 coming back, so the plan is already paid for. If you have to go to the emergency room for some reason, Aflac would reimburse the employee up to $100, or I think $125 for an emergency room visit. So, there's a lot of different things that you'd be eligible for under the voluntary accident insurance to actually receive your reimbursement back. So, it's a, I mean, a lot of people could use it, a lot of people won't use it, but I think there's some benefits there for the employees that know, hey, I've got a family that's in and out, in and out of physical therapy or in and out of anything from a health standpoint.
Well, thank you for putting that together. It's obviously a big part of our fiscal issues that we deal with all year, and it's been a challenge the last few years, so thank you. With that, I will make a motion to approve the insurance selection rate recommendations and wellness recommendations and the voluntary add-ons that they have as presented in the memo. Second. Second from Mr. Garin. Set a roll call.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Okay, motion carries. That takes us to 19-3. Professional Consulting Services with Kinley Horn and Associates. Mr. Rinkowski.
The board has seen the project list for the coming summer of '20, and it's one we want to get on the drawing board as soon, so we can get some good quality contractors, competitive bids, is the asphalt replacement at Conley McCaven, car lots, and the bus lot between them, and do a little traffic reengineering. Talked to the board about this before. This is a little bit different way to do it. We did it with HR, this consulting service with HR Green in the past. This time, we'd like to use Kinley Horn as the lead on the design drawings, specifications. They have always been a part of the process and from the traffic engineering perspective, and led HR Green through that design. I think this, we learned a lot when we did the Chesapeake Martin parking lot, which is fairly complicated, and I feel that this would be a much more streamlined process. I will tell you, this is a little more asphalt than we did back when we did the Chesapeake Martin parking lot this year, and if you take the fees and you, and you, you know, unitize it to a square foot of asphalt to dollars in a consulting service, this is reasonably comparable. It's like right, almost, it's within a little bit of where we were before financially for the services that we're expecting to get. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on that? Okay. Then I will make a motion to approve the proposed agreement for professional consulting services for Kinley Horn as presented in the agenda. Second to Mr. Troy. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Okay, that motion carries. For the fourth time tonight, Mr. Armstrong, do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, then, we had suspended closed session, so at 8:00 PM, I will make a motion to go back into closed session to finish the items not completed in the agenda. Second. Second from Mr. Quagliano. Roll call, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Scheibling?
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you all very much.